The first business of the day is to elect the Lord Mayor for the municipal year 2022-2023. Thank you.
That happens quite a bit. So I'll start again. Can I call upon councillor Peter Price to move that Shonad Mayor Richards be elected as Lord Mayor of Sheffield for the municipal year 2022 to 2023?
My Lord Mayor, consort, Deputy Lieutenant of South Yorkshire, the High Sheriff of South Yorkshire, Master and Mrs Cutler, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, comrades. It is my pleasure and indeed a great honour to move my old friend and colleague councillor Shonad Mayor Richards for the position of the Lord Mayor of Sheffield. The Welsh speaking lass from Carmarthen. Well, that's not tricky too, actually. I found out yesterday she was actually born in Bristol in England, so don't let her con you. She is the daughter of a miner who went to college and became a vicar. That explains a lot. Her family moved to Chlandby, Merit, where her father became the vicar of the village, which was a Welsh-speaking village, and clearly that's where she learnt her fluent Welsh, and I'm sure we'll get a bit of that later. However, she went to Middlesex University, which was a poly at the time, but she doesn't like me to tell you that, and gained her degree in history and drama. She taught infants for a while, then went to London, worked for the Association of Metropolitan Authorities, AMA's Winnow, and also taught infants for a while. She joined the Labour Party back in 1977. She was a bit of a lefty in those days, and she left the Labour Party and joined the Communist Party. Better not let Starman know this, you know. But she came to her senses and resumed her Labour Party membership in 1990 and became Carmarthen councillor in 1991, and actually became the Mayor of Carmarthen in 1998. During this time, she'd met a handsome young man called Howard Knight. We all remember, many of you remember him as councillor Knight from Sheffield. He was the Chair of the AMA Works Committee at the time, and they quickly became friends, and indeed she moved up to Sheffield in, I find the date, 1999. Is that right? And she had a son, Dan, who was born in 2001, which she claims is her proudest achievement. Her and Howard make sure he became an owl, and he attended his first match at six weeks, six weeks old, and he went to the match strapped to Howard's chest, I remember seeing there now, and he's over there. We're all Wednesday, aren't we, Dan? Sorry about that, United Knights. Despite doing this, he's been going to the matches ever since, and even though he's doing his degree in politics over at Manchester, he still manages to get to the matches. I suppose I first met Shonad on the football and cricket fields of Sheffield Parks, believe it or not. You see, in those days, the Labour Group had a quite a successful football and cricket team, of which Howard was a major player. Shonad with Danny Lopram were regular spectators cheering us on as we used to thrash housing or the committee clerks or whoever they were around at the time. And of course, Shonad quickly became very involved in Sheffield Labour politics and was elected a councillor for Brightside back in 2012, where she joined me and the late Pete Rippon, bless him, and we became close working colleagues together. In fact, she always claimed she was my apprentice, and she does to this day. Don't know about that. But you have certainly served your indenture, if that's what they call it these days, and you are now fully qualified to be a Lord Mayor of Sheffield. She was a very hard-working councillor in Brightside, highly respecting the community. Now moved to Manor Castle, where she's repeating the same. Here on council, she has held the post of Chair of Audit Committee, one of the few people who enjoyed doing Audit Committee, and she's also chaired the Audit Committee at the Fire Service, Fire Authority. She actually has spelt her as Cabinet Member for leisure when she studied for a while for the Cabinet Member, so she's been very active in the city council. She has a passion for books, go into her house and you'll see, but she actually works as a volunteer at Ecclesfield Library every week, once a week, and I'm sure she'll be turning up with her chain on on Friday. She's also a volunteer in the Talking Books for the Blind. She's also on the two church councils, one in Burngrieve and one at the Manor, and on the Synod. I'll not do the rest. Well, which was very useful for us. When we were trying to get the Gramsor family sent off the church, she helped us to get the lease, sign the lease, and that's been going very strong ever since, and she's remained a trustee. Unfortunately, she lost the love of her life back two years ago with the tragic loss of Howard, a friend of us all, but he would have been very proud to have been here today, and of course so would your mum and dad. Can't think of anybody else who's more deserving of this position. You've become a true Sheffielder, and it's my, and a Wednesday, and it's my proud privilege to move that councillor Shonad Mayor Richards become the Lord Mayor of Sheffield for the year 2022-23. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Price. I now call upon councillor Angela Angenzio to second the motion, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be brief. Passionate, hardworking and fair are some of the adjectives that I would use to describe councillor Richards. We are both adopted Sheffielders and we share a love and passion for this city. We have also worked together for the past three years on the Audit and Standards Committee, and as a Chair of that committee, Shonad has been nothing but gracious and cooperative, even when we have disagreed. We have become friends. In fact, her way of working is a perfect example of how we can work together, which is particularly important from today onwards, as we, all of us councillors, have to think collegiously. So I am delighted to second for councillor Shonad Mayor Richards to become the Lord Mayor of Sheffield for the year 2022-23. I wish her all the best for the coming year. You will be great, Shonad.
I now call upon members of the city council to vote by a show of hands, please. That's clearly carried. I declare that councillor Shonad Mayor Richards is duly elected as Lord Mayor of Sheffield for the municipal year 2223.
Please be upstanding for the Lord Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be on standby for the right worshipful Lord Mayor of Sheffield, Shonad Mayor Richards.
They've had to put a new footstool for short mayors. And now I am completely confused as to which page we're on. Oh, right, it's that bit, is it? Okay. I am, hang on a minute. Do I sign it and then say the oath? Okay. Oh, so my oath, I only know, where's the English bit? There. Fine. Okay. I'm going to say my oath in Welsh and then in English, just so that you know, in case you're wondering the strange words I might say. Yrwy fi cynghorydd Shonad Mayor Richards wedi fy ethol i swydd yr argluedd fyr. Yndatgan fy mord yn derbyn y swydd hono ac y byddaf yn cyflawni idolet swyddau yn briodol ac yn fydlon hed eithaf fy noethunab am gallu. Ym rwy maf i ifyddhau i'r cod presynol parthed yr ymdyguad a ddisgwylir gan e loda ei cyngor dinas Sheffield ac y gellir a ddwygio o bryd i wgylydd. And then the bit you all understand, I hope. I, Shonad Mayor Richards, having been appointed to the office of Lord Mayor of the city of Sheffield, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to conduct that is expected of members of the Sheffield City Council. Right. Thank goodness I've got somebody who knows what she's doing next to me. So which? Okay. I have to talk to you. Oh, all right. I have found that bit. Okay, next year, can we make sure we have numbered pages for the new deputy or the new Lord Mayor who will know what they're doing? Right. So I'm not quite sure of all those proper words, so I'm going to say distinguished guests, friends, comrades, colleagues, everybody who's come, thank you. And I'm just going to sort out that Peter Price. I am actually Welsh. Despite what councillor Price and my brother say, my brother was born in Bangor in North Wales and has always said to me, you're not really Welsh. So I'll say, I did one of those DNA tests, not only Welsh but West Welsh for a thousand years, as my sister said, not even north of Aberystwyth. But happily, I moved to Sheffield 21 years ago for love. I live in Burngrieve with my son Dan and our cat, Titch. I'm semi-retired these days, though being a councillor keeps me a bit busy. I've been involved in local government most of my life, either as an officer or as a councillor. I was also an infant teacher for several years and I worked as a researcher for an MP in Parliament. But local government is where we make a real difference, and I am proud to have played my part over the last 40 years. Now, as Peter alluded to, if you came to my house and looked inside, or if you ever saw me in a Zoom meeting, you'd know that my other passion is books. I'll read anything from Nordic thrillers to chick lit to recent history, and I volunteer at Ecclesfield Library every week with Joan, who's here somewhere, I hope. There's Joan. And I love talking books to our regulars. We have a playgroup on a Friday where the children race about carrying books, being read to, and generally associating libraries with having a good time. I'll be there again on Friday as usual, though I'm going to wear my chain just for show. I've promised that every Wednesday of my year as Lord Mayor, I will have children from all around the city come to the Mayor's Parlor to read with me and talk books. I'll also be going out to meet groups in libraries and doing all I can to pass on the love of reading to the children of Sheffield. And as well as this, I'll be fundraising to make sure books are part of the lives of all of our children. There is more, but don't worry, it's very big print. As I've said, I originally moved to Sheffield to be with my husband, Howard, Howard Knight, who was also a councillor in Sheffield during the blonkit years. He died two years ago from pancreatic cancer, a swift and cruel disease. He died in the palliative care unit at the Northern General Hospital. The care was second to none, but we both agreed that the building needed brightening up, modernising and making more comfortable. I promised him that I'd campaigned to do this, but almost immediately Covid hit. But now I'm finally in a position to fulfil my promise to Howard and to other people who will use the unit, and I will be fundraising for the palliative care unit to make it the place that the dying and their families need. So the last few years have been hard. I've got through with the help of good women friends and Peter Price and bereavement counselling from St Luke's Hospice, but I know I've been fortunate with all this. Covid has kept us all at home, and sometimes home isn't the safe place it should be. The third strand of my fundraising this year will be for women and children who have suffered domestic abuse. I'll also be working with others to raise awareness about women's safety in all parts of their lives, from walking through our parks to nights out to getting around on public transport. It's really important that we all feel safe and whatever we wear wherever we go, we can do it. Finally, please, please invite me and Jackie, the lady meres, to see what you and your group are doing. I'm really looking forward to getting out and meeting people now that Covid is over or moreover than it was. It's still there and let's all be careful, please, as they used to say on Hill Street Blues. So I'm looking forward to meeting those having hundreds of birthdays, those organising friendship lunches, those making charity events happen, those working to change lives and those just volunteering quietly. If you're among those people making Sheffield the brilliant place that we're all proud to call home, then I can't wait to meet you. Thank you, everybody. Right. I'm now going to call upon councillor Roger Davison to move a vote of thanks to the retiring Lord Mayor. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Deputy Lieutenant of South Yorkshire, High Sheriff of South Yorkshire, Master and Mrs Cutler, distinguished guests and colleagues, and everybody else who has come today to bear witness to the changes that have taken place or are taking place in this great city. I'm here, of course, to pay tribute to the last Lord Mayor of Sheffield, Gail Smith, and it is a great privilege to propose this vote of thanks to our outgoing Lord Mayor. The last two years have been difficult for the office of Lord Mayor, as many of you, I'm sure, are aware. But how wonderful it would be to fly like a bird. So Gail took to the sky. She jumped through the plane, but instead of flying, she plummeted. But before the ground came up to meet her, the canopy opened to slow the descent and to give her a graceful landing. And that, by the way, raised quite a lot of money for her chosen charities. Gail is the youngest of seven children. What's so fearsome about that? I owe that quote, of course, to Sound of Music, yes. When she left school, she joined the firm of Moran Rights. Many of you who are of a similar age to me or perhaps a little younger may remember the precision toolmakers Moran Rights, one of the outstanding companies of Sheffield. She then went on to join a firm of solicitors, after which she decided to change tack and became a nurse, an orthopaedic nurse. Now, this is a branch of medicine that owed much of its development to the battlefield, a good grounding for politics, perhaps. For many, politics has been an entry, an exit door, but for Gail, it's been a revolving door. She was first elected in 1992 and has been several times in and out of the council. She's fought for some very difficult wards in the past, so she's a very feisty person. She was first elected in a by-election and one of her chief lieutenants was a chap called Paddy Ashdown. Now, Paddy Ashdown, of course, was a national leader and a very famous face, and when he turned up at the door of one woman, she took a double look, double glance and said, just a minute, I'll go and put me makeup on. She's a very, as I mentioned earlier, she's a feisty lady, but she's very generous and very kind, capable of mixing in any company. One of Sheffield's favourite sons, of course, that we all like, is Joe Scarborough, and he helped her money raising activities. And in this week's star, there's a picture of her and Joe together with one of his paintings that was bigger than both of them. Now, one of the things that that Gail did recently was with a number of councillors, including several ex-Lord Mayors, accompanied Gail to the Oborium in Shropshire to open the stainless steel memorial to HMS Sheffield. Now, the weather was fine when we arrived, but when it came to the ceremony, the rain came down in torrents. Or in Shakespeare's time, cats and dogs, that's a Shakespearean quotation, by the way. Gail was given an umbrella from the gift shop and she held it up for the distinguished guest or the chief guest that was at the opening. He was a vice admiral and in fact, by coincidence, married to Princess Anne. He also served on HMS Sheffield, but not at the time of the Falklands. Now, he was well over six foot and Gail is somewhat smaller. But yet, Gail held the umbrella up for him and although he did swap around when Gail went to lay the wreath, but the rest of the time, it was Gail with her hand in the air. So if Gail has one arm longer than the other, it's the result of that stretching exercise. So one of the things that Gail was very good at was getting people together. And of course, she was surrounded by her loving family that helped her through the year. And she managed to get a range of entertainers to raise money for charities, one of whom was Tony Christie, who many of you will remember, and of course, returned to stardom via Peter Kay in recent years. Now, Tony Kay performed for over one hour. Now, this man is nearly eighty and he was note perfect. It was one of the most amazing displays of singing. And I've seen a lot of X-sixties groups that now are singing well out of tune. But he was right on the note with Tony Christie and performing as ever. But the final song had to be his big international hit. And that big international hit was Do You Know the Way to Amarillo? And for that, he gathered on stage all Gail's group of youngsters with learning difficulties. For those who don't know, Gail has formed this charity where she helps youngsters with learning difficulties. So Tony Christie brought them all on the stage and they all sang Show Me the Way to Amarillo. It was a great night and they had a great time. Her devotion to the city and the citizens of whatever background or ability made her a very worthy Lord Mayor. I commend to the council as one who serves selflessly and was a great ambassador for the city, she loves. Councillor, ex-Lord Mayor, Gail Smith.
Thank you, Roger. You delighted us again. And now can I call upon councillor Denise Fox, a former Lord Mayor herself, to second this motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Deputy Lieutenant of South Yorkshire, High Sheriff from South Yorkshire, Master and Mrs Cutler, distinguished guests, colleagues, friends and visitors, welcome. I am proud to give a vote of thanks to councillor Gail Smith for her office as Lord Mayor. She has been amazing. Well, I have to start my speech by thanking Gail for her nursing training kicking in and coming to my rescue when I dramatically passed out at full council in February. If you hadn't intervened, I would have spent an embarrassing afternoon in the hospital as the medics were insisting on calling an ambulance. So bless you. So what can I say about Gail? She has done her best to represent Sheffield under very difficult circumstances. What with Covid, social distancing and the closure of Pinson Street, you have got to hand it to her. And she's took it all in her stride. As a nickel to Lord Mayor, I know, sorry, that you won't miss chairing full council meetings. It's a difficult job and it has been made more so as meeting in Ponysford. It's not been suitable and very vast and so very far away from each other. It was all very strange and very unreal, but you took it in your stride and got on with it. And once again, we saw your patience and your nursing skills coming to the fore. She has tried under extreme circumstances to raise money for her charities. She's had events cancelled and obstacles thrown in her way, but still managed to raise a substantial amount of money. Well done. Me and my friends had a wonderful time at the fashion show. I'm still slimming into the clothes I bought, but eh oh, that's what happens when you have too many wines. Terry and myself have sat with Gail at many different events and enjoyed her company. We've laughed and we've cried and we've shared many stories. And it has been very memorable. She even got to serve Terry a dessert at one event without spilling it on her. So I think she were grateful for that. Her High Fives charity, I feel, has been benefited the most from her year in office. This has been phenomenal for not only raising money but helping the young people gain skills. With her charity shop, she had the foresight to gain a shop to raise money. But with the help of the volunteers and the children of the learning difficulties, gained many, many skills. They would have not had this opportunity of the shop environment and gain the skills without Gail's foresight. I have been told that some of the young people have managed to get meaningful employment from this due to the confidence that they gained. So well done to all the volunteers. One of the last events, Gail, which Roger's already mentioned about the unveiling of the Joe Scarborough painting. This is a painting of old Attcliff and the new Legacy Park. It captures the old and the modern Attcliff and it takes me back to my childhood. So I was really honoured to be there. The last event she attended, and must mention, was the parish nurses' service at St Matthews. It was a very fitting event to finish her year. And as one of the nurses described Gail as a nurse, she answered by saying, I used to be. But then the nurse replied by, once a nurse, always a nurse. And I couldn't agree more. A lovely way to end your extraordinary year. Well done. And a thank you from the people of Sheffield and second the vote of thanks. Thank you.
Right, and I would like to third it because you've been very great. Enjoyed working with you, Gail. Right, can I call upon members of the City Council to vote by show of hands, please? I think that's unanimous, Gail. One of your Lib Dem colleagues was scratching her leg and failed to vote, apparently. Fortunately, councillor Rooney, the snitch, has told us. Right. I now get to present the retiring Lord Mayor with the badge, which is, in case anybody hasn't seen it, it's like a little replica. It's from mapping and web, so we know it's pretty fabulous. And this is the badge which goes to all former Lord Mayors. And now to you, Gail.
Thank you very much.
Is it okay? And now the former Lord Mayor is going to address the meeting. Thank you.
Well, follow that. Thank you very much, Denise and Roger, for your very kind words. Distinguished guests, friends, colleagues and family, it has been a pleasure to represent this city as Lord Mayor. I cannot tell you how emotional it is to be out there meeting people in this city that do volunteering for nothing other than they know it's needed. We absolutely rely on the people in this city that volunteer to prop this place up and it's been amazing. I want to thank my daughters and my husband for the work that they've done along by my side. And my sister-in-law, Glynnis. I'm going to thank you again a bit later on for something else than this. But the girls and Stephen, thank you very much for your support. Without you, I could not have done this. The former High Sheriff, Martin, and the Master and Mistress Cutler. We have had a wonderful year. We got together and we had a dinner and we brought people together to talk about where does Sheffield go next? And it was an amazing event that will, I hope, continue, Master Cutler, because you're the only one left now. So please, please continue the good work of that event because it is very important. I'd like to thank the staff in the Lord Mayor's office. It's not been an easy year for either me or them. I think I only saw them face to face a few weeks ago. Running meetings by Zoom for all of us is not easy. But the one person I have to thank who's been by my side all the time is Julie the Macebearer. She is amazing and I want you to give her a round of applause. I'd like to thank Paul Robinson and his staff because I am dyslexic and Paul's gone out of his way to make sure that all my papers were written and so I could read them properly. As you noticed earlier, I do make mistakes sometimes. You don't look like Shafak Mohammed.
Years younger.
Yeah, a lot younger. I'd like to thank my chaplain, Ryan. Ryan, you have been amazing. Thank you so much. Not just for the jobs that you've done that you had to do, but for turning up to all the charity events and supporting me whenever you could. I really am proud to have had you by my side. So thank you very much. I need to say thank you to Cheryl Ridge. She's a member of staff at High Fives for the work that she's done in the charity shop. So the charity shop started in October. I went to see Crystal Peaks. I knew that we was going to find it very difficult to raise money in the circumstances that we've all been through in the last two years. So I went to see them and said, could we have a charity shop so that we can raise a bit of money? And they said, yeah, go and pick which shop you want. There's plenty empty. Sadly, they're all filling up now, though. So we chose the one on the east mall and we called it the Lord Mayor's Charity Shop, which was novel. The kids have enjoyed it. We had young people come to work there who liked this, shy, didn't know how to work in a shop, never done it. But when we closed the shop, all heads were held high and I am so proud of them. One of them has got a job, like Denise has said, so that is amazing. The kids would have been a bigger part of my life this year had we had the time to do more. But at the cathedral at my civic Sunday, I can honestly say there wasn't a dry eye in that place. The kids came to the front, they sang and they signed and it was an amazing experience for them and for us. Yes, and you can still see it on video if you want to see it. I just need to say thank you to Ruth, Wendy, Zoe, Mike and Linda and all the kids that worked in the charity shop. Two very special people here today who have been, they've become my best friends, Denise and Terry Fox. I am so proud to have spent nearly everywhere I've been with you two. And you've given me such a lot of support and I really, really appreciate that. Terry, you're an amazing man and you've got a fantastic wife. So thank you. I also like to thank Tony Downing because without you stepping up when you did to do an extra year as Lord Mayor, Tony, I wouldn't have had anything to do. So thank you for that. So when you become Lord Mayor, you get involved with a lot of different groups and clubs. And one of the first groups that I got involved with was the Sea Cadets. And I met this amazing man called John Daly. Wow, he's a whiz. He is everywhere. This man, he doesn't only look after the Sea Cadets, he also works for the Princess Trust. And I've been to some events with John that he's invited me to and I've met some amazing young people who've gone through him and become men and young women that are strong enough to go out there into the community and be real people. He is an amazing man and he needs an award for it and I haven't got one, but if I had, I'd give it you. John came to me early on in my role as Lord Mayor and said, Lord Mayor, would you be happy to have a sea cadet? I went, bring it on, of course. So we chose a young man called Alfie Webster. Get up, Alfie. Thank you so much for standing by my side, looking after me, carrying wreaths and just being you. Thank you. That's from me and that's a little present. Thank you very much. Being Lord Mayor is such a pleasure. You meet wonderful people and I want to tell you about one of the young people that I met during my time. We all call him Captain Tobias, a young man with learning disability, cerebral palsy, to be honest, who walks with a frame. And he walked a hundred miles, that young man, to raise funds for PACE, the charity that helped him during his daily life. So I went to see him and he didn't know who I was, but his mum was appreciative. We gave him a nice plaque. And his head teacher said, Lord Mayor, would you, can you spare a few more minutes? You know, can you come round rest at school? I went, can have as long as you want. So I had a trip round every single class and met some amazing young people. I met this young man who was making buns and it was nearly Easter. And I said to his carer, what's the decoration on the buns? She said, you don't want to know, Lord Mayor. I said, I do. She said, it's a rabbit's bum. So he'd obviously got a good sense of humour. And then his head teacher told me that during Covid, he learnt to play the piano and his family put it on YouTube and it grew hundreds of thousands. To the extent that Gary Barlow saw this and decided to donate a piano, but it's an electric piano. So I leaned over and said to this young man, would you play the piano for me? And he said, no. I said, okay, well, if you change your mind while I'm still here, let's see, hope it happens. So we carried on round the school and they brought me out and he played the piano. I cannot tell you, it took my breath away. This was, I can't tell you what piece of music it was, but it was classical music. And he never looked at the keys. He looked at me all the time I was playing the piano. And then he played a piece of Gary Barlow's work. And I said to him, was it amazing to meet Gary Barlow? And he said, who's Gary Barlow? So that was, that really stands out in my year as Lord Mayor. I've nearly come to an end. I want to mention the fundraising because actually, under the circumstances, we've managed to raise over thirty thousand pounds. And there's a lady in this room that's my right-hand man, not just for this year, but for my charity, Glynnis. You are amazing. Glynnis looks after the money. She's my treasurer for my charity and she's really good at keeping me in order. She's my sister-in-law, Stephen's big sister. Big round of applause for you, Glynnis. So as Denise said, we had a fantastic evening with Joe Scarborough. Some of you bought tickets, we made some good money for that. The big night out was an amazing event. And all together, as I say, we've raised just over £30,000. So thank you for those of you that I have had the pleasure to spend time with in my Lord, my year as Lord Mayor. And I wish you well, Sean Ed, for your year. And if you need any advice on how to keep this lot under control, I'll be there.
You'll be sitting here with me, I promise.
Take care, thank you.
This is strange, this chair business. Hang on, let me just stand up. Thank you. No. Correct. Gail's chaplain is now going to say a few words, please. Sorry.
Hi. I wasn't sure how to address everyone, but I think I've picked it up. It's Lord Mayor, High Sheriff, Master Cutler and distinguished guests. Have I got it right? Thank you. And everyone else, friends and family of the Lord Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to just share a few words this afternoon. I've known Gail and her family for quite a few years now. I think I first met Lizzie and Rachel when they used to bomb around Mosburgh in their little yellow Chinky Chento all those years ago with the music blaring out. And then got to know Gail a few years later when we partnered together doing some development work with the Salvation Army. And Gail was pivotal in inviting the Salvation Army to become part of working life in the Westfield community. And without her, we wouldn't be in that community. And I'm really grateful to Gail for the invitation and also the partnership with her and loads of other people in the community to be in that, to be in that estate. And so really grateful for that. And so it's been a real honour and privilege to, to support Gail and her family in her year as Lord Mayor and to support and serve her in this capacity. But as a lifelong son of Sheffield, it's also been my privilege to serve the city of Sheffield in this capacity. I love Sheffield, I think it's got the best of everything. And I'm really proud to have represented the city in this capacity. I think the biggest honour for me in terms of the roles I've fulfilled has been the Remembrance Day service. As a member of the Salvation Army, I've been in and around that event for most of my life. I remember waving the band off from the old, from the old Crossbury Street Citadel and welcoming them back when they brought the parade back. I remember being absolutely petrified when they had the real-life cannons to start the, the minute silence off and sent a shudder through your, through your body when that went off. But yeah, so to have the privilege of leading prayer at that event was an honour that I'll cherish for the rest of my life. So thank you, Gail and Sheffield, for the opportunity to do that. I also want to thank Gail for nominating the Salvation Army as one of your chosen charities for the year. And it's been an absolute privilege working with all of the other charities on many of the fundraising events. A lot of work has gone on behind the scenes to put those events on and to make that happen. And I just hope now that as the charities that are the beneficiaries of that money, that we can do all that we can to make the most of that money and to use it wisely and to use it for the good of the people of Sheffield. It's been my privilege to meet some really amazing people. The events have been great, but I think the best thing about those events has been the conversations that have happened in and around them. Just over coffees and teas and biscuits and just loads of different amazing conversations with some brilliant people, many of which are in this room. People have influenced, people have, have great integrity. And from my work, I've really benefited from that in terms of, and I, and I really think there might be some good collaboration that we're able to do as a result of conversations that have come out of just offhand chats that we've had. And so I've wondered hard whether to say this, and I think I feel called to say it, in a room of influential and powerful people, is just to, just to speak and say, there's some, loads and loads of people in our city that are hurting right now, that are going through some really, really difficult times. Times that are the worst in their lives and times that many people feel like they've lived through and never thought they'd go back to. And they're living through those times again. And I just want to say to those of you that have got any power and any influence in this city, just please do everything you can to help those people. I get that many of the causes are out of your power and I guess, get that many of the solutions are out of your control. But please just do everything you possibly can to help the people in our city at this time because I know that they will really need it and will really benefit from anything that you can do. So just to finish, say thank you, Gail. Thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. Thank you to the Lord Mayor's Office for all of your support. And thank you to the city of Sheffield for allowing me this opportunity. Take care and God bless you all.
Right, I think I've got my microphone on. I think I've got my place in the script. And I now present a badge to commemorate Stephen's year of office as the retiring consort. So once again, a beautiful badge, but I hope you'll remember what's been a great year for you.
Thank you.
And on my script, it says, the retiring consort's daughter, Elizabeth, will respond. But I suspect there's somebody, are we having two of you responding? Okay. You're her support consort, okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Elizabeth, I am Gail's youngest daughter. Elder daughter. Today I'm here to speak on behalf of my family. Many of you may not know that my mum hadn't thought of becoming Lord Mayor until the other year. In fact, those that know her well, being apolitical would be very hard for her. But she's managed it. In fact, us as a family talked her into putting her name forward. A big drive for her was that she would be able to raise valuable funds for her charities. Over the years, we have been fortunate to spend time with former Lord Mayors and we felt that mum would do an amazing job representing Sheffield and being part of Sheffield's history. I've got a little fact for you. Mum is the 124th Lord Mayor of Sheffield, she's the 19th female Lord Mayor of Sheffield and she's actually the second Sheffield Lord Mayor of our family. The first was Phyllis Smith. So there's not many families that can say that. At the beginning of my mum's year as Lord Mayor, she said in her speech that it's going to be a family affair. And it really has been. We have been by her side every step of the way, that being myself, my dad, my sister Rachel and my Aunt Glynnis. We can all say that we have done, had a fantastic time. It's been an absolute honour to be by your side, mum, representing this fantastic city. I have some highlights. Our trip to London for a charity dinner. The Cutler's Feast, I had never heard of white tie dress code. I felt so privileged to attend. We have been to schools given, to give awards to children. They always ask how old you are, they always think you're rich as well. Remembrance Day was truly touching. Recently, we attended HM Sheffield's Remembrance Service and it was so heartfelt. We have met lords and ladies, mayors, masters, we have even met the master of playing cards from London. Mum has worked closely with the former High Sheriff and the current and former Master and Mistress Cutler. We have attended a lot of events together and we really have enjoyed their company. Together, they held an event to talk about the future of Sheffield. The event was attended by businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, First Representation, charities, our universities and politicians. To get, they got, sorry. They got these people together in a room to start talking about what each of them can do for the future of Sheffield. I hope this will continue and be one of the legacies from you working together in office. As Roger has already mentioned, regarding some of the stuff my mum's actually done, sorry, start again. My mum's charities are so close to her heart. Roger mentioned that she'd done a skydive. Well, that was something me and Rachel didn't stand by her side to do. She did that herself. Yeah. Christopher, my sister's husband, did actually do that as well with her and so did Alfie. But me and Rachel, we stayed well and truly grounded with that one. But from doing that, she's become the, the highest the Lord Mayor has ever been and now she's in the Guinness Book of Records, apparently. So what an achievement. We have attended numerous events, but in particular, the big charity night out event, it was lovely to hear people speak about you so highly. It makes us so proud as a family. To say I am born and bred in Sheffield, I've learnt so much about the city in the past year. We have met some truly inspirational people on our travels and made some lasting friendships. I feel privileged to have been part of your year, mum. Wherein the Sheffield gold has been amazing. You get treated like royalty wherever you go. I would like to make a special mention to very important people that worked behind the scenes. That's Julie, I hope you all know Julie, yeah, and Roland. As a family, we recognise the support and the dedication to your roles. And without you both, I don't know what we would have done. So thank you. Julie, you are the oracle of the town hall and your knowledge of the city and its civic history is second to none. I would say you need to write a book. Mum, as the clock's turned 12, your term of office as the Lord Mayor has ended. Your charity no longer awaits. Your clothing budget is well and truly spent. So it's back to civic street for you. Nanny duties are calling. Only joking. As you all know, the people of Mosburgh have spoken yet again and voted during for another four years in office as their local councillor. Mum, we are so proud of you, you are truly inspirational. And on behalf of myself, our family and the city of Sheffield, thank you.
Thank you, that was lovely. I don't imagine Dan will ever stand up and do that for me. Right. Can I now call upon councillor Sue Auckland to formally move that councillor Colin Ross be appointed Deputy Lord Mayor of the city of Sheffield for the municipal year 2022, 2023?
Thank you. Can I formally move that councillor Colin Ross be Deputy Lord Mayor for the coming financial year?
Thank you, Sue. And can I call upon councillor Ruth Milson, who is going to formally second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to formally second councillor Colin Ross for the position of Deputy Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Right, can I call upon all the members of the city council to vote by a show of hands, please? Thank you, I think again unanimous. Just checking, was that right, Mick? Did I get that right this time, Mick? Thank you. Well, congratulations, Colin.
Thank you.
Right. I get given this badge, but I now have to try and manoeuvre. You have to stop being quite so tall. There you go. Congratulations. Whoops, I had to declare that Colin Ross was duly appointed, I think.
Thank you. In English only this time. I, councillor Colin Ross, having been appointed to the office of Deputy Lord Mayor of the city of Sheffield, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct that is expected of members of the Sheffield City Council.
Right. I would now like to appoint my chaplain, the Reverend Karen Colley, and invest her with her badge of office. Karen was the curate at St Aidan's on the Manor when I first met her and we have become good friends. And her husband and I exchanged very obscure music facts and recipes. But Karen is going to be my spiritual guide this year and I will need her. So thank you, Karen. Ooh. Again, not sure if I can reach, let's have a go. It's looking pretty complicated. Ah, okay. I've been asked to offer a prayer, so let us pray. Almighty God, firstly, we pray for Gail as the outgoing mayor and give thanks for all that she has done during this year, along with her team, and for the ways in which she has enriched this city. And for Sean Ed. Sean Ed, I thank God for all that you are and all that you will bring to the role of Lord Mayor. As you step out in faith on this journey, I pray for God's wisdom to guide your way. I pray for his strength and courage as he leads you into the work he has planned for you. And I pray that all those that meet, you meet and touch along the way may see his light and love shining through you. And finally, I ask your blessing, Lord, on our city council and on all those gathered here today. May we all know your wisdom, strength and courage to lead, support and nurture our city and all those in our care. In the name of Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. Thank you, Karen. My civic service will be held at Sheffield Cathedral on Sunday, the 12th of June. I just want to say a quick thank you, despite everything, to my brother who's travelled such a long way to get here, to Mike and Linda who've also travelled such a long way, to my brother and sister-in-law, Ian and Helen, who've broken off their holiday to come here, to all of Howard's children and the grandchildren for coming here to support me, all my friends and my neighbours, Trudy and Nazma. Thank you all very much for coming. Oh, sorry, and a special mention to Sue and Jo, who've come all the way from Tesco. Who are the nicest staff you could meet. And with that, thank you all. Please join me for lunch in the reception rooms. I think the staff will be guiding you out that way while I get guided out this way and go through a secret passage and mysteriously appear in the reception room before you all. Thank you all very much. Okay, we'll just wait a few moments for all the papers to be handed round. Hello, members of the public in the gallery. Thank you for coming. Right, has everything... Right, I think everybody's got their additional papers, which you can all shuffle at random and find where you're going to be. Right. Can I welcome members and the viewing public to this reconvened annual meeting of the council? And firstly, we'll have our housekeeping arrangements from Gillian Duckworth, the Director of Legal and Governance. Gillian.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing inside the town hall wherever this is possible. Please try to avoid congregating around exits and entrances, follow any signage which is provided to keep you safe. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting. Council members, officers and members of the public are recommended to wear a face covering when moving around the building and members and officers are asked to wear a face covering at all times within the council chamber, except when speaking at the meeting. Hand sanitizer is also available for you to use. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. Can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the evacuation signal sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. For those of us in the chamber, the main staircase by the empty room is not in use. We would need to evacuate via the doors at the rear of the chamber, turning right and making our way down the corridor and into the stairwell, then using the fire escape which leads to Cheney Row. Once you've exited the building, please make your way to the assembly point at Tudor Square. If for any reason your path to the Cheney Row exit is blocked, turn left out to the chamber, go down the stairs at the end of the corridor and then use the fire escape which leads to Surrey Street. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information. And for safety reasons, please may I request that recording equipment is not held over the balcony. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Gillian. Right, before we start on item five of the agenda, can I ask whether there are any additional apologies for absence from members of the council which were not reported in the morning part of this meeting? Right, that's no... Thank you. Sophie. Right, so the next item is the traditional item after every election where we have the introduction of the newly elected councillors. So new councillors elected in the recent municipal elections will now be introduced to the chamber and I believe that they will be brought in by a colleague from their ward. Is that right? Okay. So I don't know which order you're doing them in, is it the same order that I... Just shout.
Lord Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I introduce the latest member for Aitken Ward, councillor Curtis Crossland.
Too late to change?
Thank you. One of the nicest young men I've ever had the pleasure of meeting. You're going to be seeing a lot of them in the next few years. May I introduce the newest member for Broome Hill and Sharrow Vale Ward, it's Malakai Hayby.
Lord Mayor, it gives me immense pleasure to introduce the newest elected member for Crooks and Cross Paul Ward, councillor Minesh Parak.
Lord Mayor, colleagues, members of the public, it gives me great pleasure to introduce councillor Craig Gamble-Pew, the new Labour co-op ward councillor for East Ecclesfield.
Lord Mayor, it's my great pleasure to announce the new Green member for Leadless Valley, the amazing Marianne Elliott to complete the Green team. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, I'm delighted to introduce councillor Henry Notte, who's the second Green councillor in Hillsborough Ward, who's going to be joining me. Councillor Henry Notte.
Lord Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the new Labour councillor for Netherage and Sharrow Ward, Niget Bishara.
Lord Mayor, I'm delighted to introduce the newly elected Labour member for Park and Arbuthnot, Nobila Milana.
Good afternoon, Lord Mayor. I'm delighted to introduce the new Labour member for Stockbridge and Upper Don, councillor Janet Riddler.
Lord Mayor, fellow councillors, it's a great privilege to introduce you to my good friend and the newest Labour councillor for Walkley, councillor Tom Hunt.
Right. I'll just let Ben do his social media stuff. Right, item number six, declarations of interest. Are there any... Okay. So we're going to move on to the next item, which is item number seven, Sheffield City Council constitution. Now, this item of business is to approve an updated constitution for the city council reflecting the new committee system of governance, which is to be operated by the council from this date. A report of the Director of Legal and Governance containing the new constitution was circulated to members of the council and published on the council's website towards the end of last week. And there are a few paper copies available in the council chamber for old ladies like me. Okay. Since the publication of the report, officers have identified an error relating to the commissioning and procurement delegations to policy committees. And to rectify this error, an alteration is proposed. Addendum A, which has been circulated at this meeting, sets out the proposed corrections. A motion to approve the recommendations in the director's report, subject to the corrections set out in addendum A, has also been circulated at the meeting. There is one proposed amendment to consider. The motion will be moved and seconded and then the mover and seconder of the amendment will speak and the matter will then be debated. There's a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. So may I call on councillor Julie Grocott to move the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In formally moving this motion, I would like to just remind members of you, as already stated, that there is an addendum to it and I formally move the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. May I call on councillor Diane Hurst to second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally seconded.
Right, may I call on councillor Joe Otten to move the amendment? You have up to two minutes, Joe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a very simple amendment. What all this does is to ensure the Strategy and Resources Committee has an odd number of members and what that does is ensure that it is not in the control, under the current numbers on the council, not under the control of any one party. Obviously, if there is a majority on the council, then it will be in the control of the majority of the party, but there isn't one. And this is to ensure that case. We're currently in a position where if, for whatever reason, due to changes in the size of the Strategy and Resources Committee, which might happen for any number of reasons, there were to be an even number of members, then there is a likelihood that it would then be in the control of a single party in the council. Now, it was an important part of the political agreement we all reached yesterday, that all the policy committees, including Strategy and Resources, should be balanced, that is not controlled by a single party. That's been achieved with all the other committees by setting the size to nine and making the appointments we're going to make today. That isn't... That is also the case with Strategy and Resources as we're appointing it today, but in case that should change, because that size can change for all sorts of reasons, this would ensure that that committee also remains politically balanced. So that's why we've put this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Otten. And may I call on councillor Sue Alston to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will just formally second that amendment.
Right, we now move to a debate on the matter. May I remind members that usual protocol in the council chamber is that members stand when speaking at the meeting and please lower your face mask covering, your face mask covering, if you are going to speak. Thank you. So I'm looking here for people who would like to speak on a constitutional amendment of great importance. Right. So shall we sit in silence for 25 minutes in case? No, okay. In which case I will offer a right of reply to councillor Grocott. You have up to two minutes to speak.
We just input the motion and amendment, Lord Mayor.
Right. Okay, in that case, we're going to move to the vote on the amendment moved by councillor Joe Otten. Okay? Sorry? I thought you were saying, are we now going to have a debate, Joe? No. Right, all those in favour of the amendment, please show. Thank you. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Right, I have to say that was overwhelmingly carried and we now move on to the main motion, which was proposed by councillor Grocott, which now has the amendment from councillor Otten. Can all those in favour please show? Those against? Are there any abstentions? No, overwhelmingly carried again. So remind me where we are now, Gillian? Page six? Thank you. Right, so we now move on to item eight, to appoint a leader of the council for the municipal year 2022/23. Are there any nominations for leader of the council? Councillor Kiwi?
Lord Mayor, may I nominate councillor Terry Fox for leadership, please?
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, may I...
Sorry, is that seconded? It's seconded, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. How did you know I wasn't going to second? No, I...
Do you know, I just had this inkling. Weird, isn't it?
Lord Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Shafak Mohammed.
And is there a seconder?
Lord Mayor, I will second councillor Shafak Mohammed.
Thank you. Right, so we have two candidates. Are there any more candidates? Thank you. Councillor Jones. I don't think councillor Price was awake when you nominated him? Right, so I now have two nominations for leader of the council. So I'm now going to ask members of the council to vote on each nomination. So can I ask those in favour of councillor Shafak Mohammed, who nearly became the Lord Mayor this morning? I'm assuming someone's counting for me. I'm assuming someone's counting for me. And you've got those behind you as well, Craig? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do we do an against, or is it just a straightforward between the two candidates? Right. And those against, please show? Do we need the members? Okay, hands down. Poor old councillor Rooney. And are there any abstentions? Councillor Chincha. Okay. And I abstained as well, from there. Oh, we've got that, yeah, is that right? So we've got 28. Where we've got, whose apologies have we got? We've got Tony Down's apologies, and a Lib Dem lady councillor apology. Okay. Councillor Mohammed failed to reach a majority of the councillors. So we have 28 for, 51 against, and two abstentions. Right, we go now to the vote for councillor Terry Fox for leader. All those in favour, please show. Hands down, and those against? A general?
Yeah.
Sorry, hands down. And are there any abstentions? Councillor Chincha. Okay, so we had 39 for, and we had 42 against and abstentions, so that is lost. So currently, we don't have a leader as a council. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting for 10 minutes while we have a discussion about this impasse. Thank you, members. The leaders have had a discussion, and they are suggesting that we have a go at item eight again. So, oh, hang on, I've got things I have to say first, Abdul. Item eight, to appoint a leader of the council for the municipal year 2022-23. Are there any nominations for leader of the council, Abdul?
Yeah, can I nominate councillor Terry Fox for leadership, please?
And can I ask for a seconder? Can I second councillor Terry Fox, please? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Ooh, councillor Shafak Mohammed.
That working? Right. Can I be clear? We've had a meeting in there, and the clear advice that's been given to us as councillors, if we don't resolve this situation after this vote, then the senior councillors, council officers of this city council take over. That is not what the people of Sheffield voted for. We had two options before, and the smaller party has decided neither. I've heard they're not going to change their way. For the sake of Sheffield, we are now going to abstain, Douglas, because the grown-up politics is required. We are not here to allow city council officials...
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. No, come on. This is, this is the bit, hold on.
We are not going to allow city council...
Hang on, Shafak, please.
What second?
No, no, Shafak, I'm standing up.
So, thank you.
When the mayor is standing up, everybody sits down. I know you can't tell I am, but I am. I just wanted to say, this is a very serious time, and councillor Mohammed Shafak has serious things to say. Can we hear it in silence, please? Not because you may not like or indeed love what he is about to say, but just so that we are listening responsibly, because don't forget, the people of Sheffield are indeed watching us today. Thank you. Carry on, Shafak.
It's a role that city council officers have made clear, even today, that they do not want to take, because the city councillors are the ones elected by the people of Sheffield. Colleagues, in the next few weeks, you are going to hear how serious the budget deficit is, how serious our reserve levels are. And I am not laying it on, because all three leaders have been given this briefing earlier this week, that if we do not resolve our budget deficit, then I kid you not, there's real danger that commissioners appointed by a Conservative government may come and take over. And I will never allow that while I'm here. So, for me, for the sake of Sheffield, I have told my colleagues that we will not be nominating myself. It's bigger than me. So, Lord Mayor, move to the vote.
Thank you, councillor. I'm sure you asked your colleagues, you didn't tell them, did you? I'm sure the Lib Dems are also a Democratic Party. Right, so we have one, oh, did you want to say something, Douglas?
Point of order, Lord Mayor. Councillor Mohammed asks to move to the vote.
Hang on, we have to have a vote on whether we do that, don't we? Yep. Right, all those in favour of moving straight to a vote? I really don't need those sorts of remarks. We're here for a very serious reason, and I've asked people to conduct themselves seriously, councillor. Stop it. Stop it right now. Okay, once more, I have had to stand up, which is not something that any mayor ever wants to do, because when you stand up, everybody else has to be silent. This is a very serious thing that has happened today in this council chamber. We have now had a vote on whether to move to a vote on one candidate. That has been overwhelmingly carried. We will now proceed to that vote. Will all those in favour of the nomination of councillor Fox please raise their hands? And hands down, those against councillor Fox? Hands down. Those abstaining? Hands down, sorry. Right. We have got 38 for, we have 14 against, and we have 29 abstentions, in which case I declare that councillor Terry Fox is duly elected as the leader of this council for the municipal year 2022-23. Thank you, colleagues. And we'll now move on to item number nine, to appoint a deputy leader of the council for the municipal year 2022-23. Are there any nominations for deputy leader of the council?
Lord Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Julie Grocott.
And is that seconded? Thank you.
Can I second it then?
Yes, I have two seconders. Right, are there any other nominations for deputy leader of the council? There are none. In which case, do we do it by claiming there's no other candidate, or do we have to have a vote? Right, we have to vote. I wasn't sure if there was just one candidate that it was just accepted, but it isn't. So we have to vote. So those in favour of councillor Julie Grocott as the deputy leader? Shh. Let the officers count, please. Hang on, we haven't, we've only done that so far. Hands down, everybody. Those against? None. And those abstaining? Thank you. Hands down, everybody, sorry. Right, and the result of that vote is 52 for, and no, none against, and 29 abstentions. I therefore declare the motion is carried, and councillor Julie Grocott is appointed deputy leader of the council until the date of the next annual meeting of the council in 2023. Thank you very much. Thank you. Right, so we now have a leader and a deputy leader of the council. Leader, would you like to make some leaders' remarks?
Chair, Lord Mayor, I'd just obviously like to thank councillor Shafak Mohammed for the way that he's conducted himself. We have entered the last few days to try and get a tripartite agreement in a politically proportionate way. The amount of time we have sat in this council, listening to the debate by a number of members, and members sat in this council today about being politically proportionate, and they fell at the first hurdle. It is upsetting, it is absolutely unforgivable that we were going to be put in a position that this council, after the citizens of Sheffield had cast their election and nominated Labour as the largest party, we had a politically proportionate way of dealing with this, that two parties agreed and one didn't. And the overall view was that, from this, was that we was going to get in a situation where publicly elected members were not going to run this council. We had been informed by statutory officers the serious situation we are in, and people chose not to go with that advice. Lord Mayor, all I can say is, I am going to try my best as leader to navigate our way through with all members on all committees. Ill or bear, we will get this over the line. We have a massive deficit in the budget to sort out. I'd love to get these chairs sorted and over the line, so we can take up our challenge of putting this back on the rails. Not only for me, out there, there is a cost of living crisis that is absolutely hammering families in this city, and we play about with numbers games. I can't be part of that. For me, I think we have offered a fair opportunity. We've put Sheffield first, we've not played party politics, we have put a deal on the table, and we want all those parties to sit round and take part, just as the people voted in the referendum. For me, it is about getting up and doing the business for the people of this city, not for councillor Terry Fox, not for councillor Shafak Mohammed, not for councillor Douglas Johnson, but for every single person in this city that is dealing with that cost of living crisis. They've been there before, they thought they were through it, they're there again, having to deal with it, and we've heard today that inflation is at its ice in 40 years. Lord Mayor, it's not time for party politics, it's a time for rolling up the sleeves, getting our hands really dirty into this, and let's get delivering decisions for the people of Sheffield. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Right, thank you councillor Fox. I would just say, so here we are in a new way of working. We're now moving forward into a committee system. Even those of us who are very old, like councillor Price and myself, who have worked under previous committee systems, sorry, councillor Athanga, and you, Arthur Statesman, this is a new way of working again through committees, and it's what the people of Sheffield have asked us to do. So mindful of that, we're going to put what happened in the last half hour behind us, and now agree that we are going to work together in this new committee system to make sure it works. Now, having seen what happened in the last half hour with people getting quite cross about things, I want to say now that this is going to be a difficult process, because it's a new way of working, and we're going to have to be patient with each other, we're going to have to be tolerant with each other, and there's going to have to be give and take. And that's not always easy. We have 84 strong egos in this chamber, otherwise we wouldn't all have stood for election. But we have to think now about the way we are going to work to make all this happen. We've already heard that we have a large deficit that we have to fight, we know that the cost of living is extraordinarily rocketing. I, in fact, had somebody tell me this week that their standing order for gas and electricity has gone up from £145 to over £600 a month. These are actually the figures that we are dealing with and that the people of Sheffield are dealing with, and they want us to give them all the support that we can. So let's just be a bit sober this afternoon and reflect on that and say, we're going to get this right. It won't always be right first time, we'll get stuff right the second time, once we've thought about things. Thank you. Right, we're now going to move to item 11, which is establishment of council committees in 22-23. which is establishment of council committees in 22-23, and the appointment of members to serve on those committees. A motion to establish and appoint members to council committees in 2022-23 has been circulated, you should all have one. So can I call on councillor Diane Hurst to move the motion?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. And can I ask councillor Joe Otten to second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In seconding, I'd just like to correct some errors in the document. There's seven names that have been missed out that we did submit, I will read out. So can we, can we please include, as a substitute on the finance subcommittee, councillor Shafak Mohammed, as a substitute on the adult health and social care committee, councillors Sue Alston and Sue Auckland, as substitutes on the education, children and families committee, councillors Gail Smith and Kevin Oxley, as substitutes on transport regeneration climate, councillors Cliff Woodcraft and Barbara Masters, and as substitutes on waste and street scene, councillors Sue Alston and Alan Hooper. Those names were submitted, so you should have them.
Thank you, councillor Alton. Does, any, but, hang on, Martin, would you like to say something?
Yeah, just, just a point of information, kind of on the lines of what Joe was saying. Some of our submissions were missed off as well, and there's potentially some issues around proportionality on a couple of committees that might need looking at. So we're happy to provisionally support these, but I think it's worth having a look at them again, and we'll try and get the ones that missed off sorted. Thanks.
Lovely, Roger, do you have a point of order?
No, just a misspelling.
Well, if it's, if it's not a point of order, don't worry about it.
There's a misspelling of my name.
Do you know, I've had my name misspelled all my life, Roger. So we'll, we'll sort that out later. Okay. Yeah, I've even been called councillor Sean Ed Mohammed, you're right. And it was an honour and a privilege. Right, does any member wish to speak on this motion? None? Okay, do you... Councillor Hurst, do you want to sum up?
Not particularly, Lord Mayor. We, we've worked long and hard on this, and we, the wits will be getting together to work further. Thank you.
In that case, can I ask all those in favour of this motion, please show? Thank you, hands down, all those against? Any abstentions, councillor Chin Chin? Thank you, that was unanimously carried. And we're moving on to item twelve, appointment of chairs and deputy chairs of certain council committees and their subcommittees in 2022-23. A motion to appoint the chair, deputy chair, and group spokespeople for each policy committee and their subcommittees, and the chair and deputy chair of the regulatory committees and other council committees in 22-23, has been circulated to everybody. Can I call on councillor Diane Hurst to move the motion?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And councillor Joe Otten, would you like to second the motion?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on this item? No? In which, sorry, just, just checking, no? All those in favour of the motion, please show. Thank you. And those against? And any abstentions? Okay, unanimously passed, thank you very much. We're now on item number thirteen, appointments to council panels, groups, et cetera, and to external bodies for 2022-23. A motion to establish and appoint to council panels, groups, et cetera, and to appoint to external bodies in 2022-23, has been circulated at the meeting. Can I call on councillor Diane Hurst to move the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In moving this motion, can I say that there are a number of admissions from this paper, and that the priority for the groups is really to get across the line the joint boards of the fire and rescue authority, the pensions authority, the pensions board, and the police and crime panel, and that the wits will meet and bring further recommendations back to officers and for authorisation and regularisation at the June council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hurst. Councillor Otten, would you like to second?
Yes, I, I second that, that the, we agree the appointments of those, those four bodies, and, sorry, agree the appointment of those four bodies and defer the rest to, to the next meeting, or to, you know, for, for the work by the reps. Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak? No, in which case we will move to a vote. All those in favour of the motion, please show. And those against? And those abstaining? Again, passed unanimously, thank you very much, members. Item number fourteen, dates of council and committee meetings in 22-23. A proposed schedule of council and committee meetings for 22-23, together with a motion to approve the schedule of meetings, has been circulated at the meeting. Has everybody seen it? Can I call on councillor Diane Hurst to move the motion, please?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Might as well stay standing up, councillor. And councillor Otten?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Does any member wish to speak on this item? Right, in which case we'll go to a vote, all those in favour of the motion, please show. Hands down, all those against? And are there any abstentions? No, that's great, that is clearly carried, thank you. Agenda item sixteen, notices of motion at council meetings in 22-23. A motion to agree the order in which notices of motion will be listed on the council summons for ordinary meetings of the council in 22-23, has been circulated at the meeting. So, again, you've all got it. Can I call on councillor Diane Hurst to move the motion?
You may certainly do that, Lord Mayor. Formally moved.
Beautifully done, let's see if councillor Otten can do it even better.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Well, I think that was, that was pretty lovely as well. Does any member wish to speak? No? In which case, can we move to a vote, all those in favour of the motion, please show? Thank you, all those against? Are there any abstentions? No, great, that's carried unanimously. Right, item number sixteen, members allowances, a report of the independent remuneration panel. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the executive director's resources on the recommendations from the council's independent remuneration panel on the members allowances scheme. A new scheme needs to be approved to support the council's new committee system of governance. The report was circulated yesterday to members of the council and has been published on the council's website with the agenda for this meeting. A motion to approve the recommendations in the executive director's report has been circulated at the meeting. Can I call on councillor Diane Hurst to move the motion?
Certainly, Lord Mayor. Formally moved.
Thank you. And can I call on councillor Joe Otten to second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally seconded.
Thank you very much. It's echoing a bit, isn't it? Sorry. Does any member wish to speak on this item? No? In which case, we will go to a vote, all those in favour of the motion, please show. Hands down, those against? And any abstentions? No? Okay, so that has passed. Woo, well done, after that initial excitement we're getting there, eh? So item number seventeen is a vote of thanks to former councillors. May I propose that the thanks of this council be given to former councillors Neil Gibson, Francine Johnson, Mohamed Marouf, Kate McDonald, Moya O'Rourke, Josie Pachek, Chris Rosling-Josephs, Calhoun Rivers, Jack Scott, and Alison Teal for their hard work and service to the city of Sheffield? Is that agreed? Thank you. Right, as Lord Mayor, what I'm going to propose is that I'm going to write to all these people to thank them for their service. If any member of the council wishes to provide their own written message of thanks for the work of one or more of those former councillors, then please send them in to me at the Lord Mayor's office, and these messages will then be conveyed to the respective former councillors along with my own letter of thanks. I just think that means that the councillors who are no longer with us will actually see or read all the nice things people say about them, as opposed to us all just saying nice things here, and it not being then conveyed to the councillors. So get your writing sets out and think of all the lovely things you want to say to your former colleagues, please. Right, and with that, this concludes the business of the annual meeting of the council. The first meetings of the council's local area committees will follow, at which the chairs and deputy chairs will be appointed, and the frequencies of their meetings will be agreed. And then it says here, refer to the separate Lord Mayor's script. So... Just sort of hum amongst yourselves, and here we are. First meetings of local area committees. May I remind members that only members of the local area committee concerned can speak and vote on the motion relating to that committee? So meeting number one, the central local area committee, can all the members of that committee stand up, please? And it is... Mick, you promised no heckles until the next meeting. It was Maza. Well, I am, I am so shocked. Five, five pounds, five pounds to the Lord Mayor's. No, 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 it's, it's all right, councillor Maza. Iqbal is now in my very bad books. It is to be formally moved by councillor Martin Phipps and formally seconded by councillor Douglas Johnson that A, councillor Bernard Little be appointed chair, and councillor Malachi Hayby, is that, have I pronounced it properly? Thank you. Be appointed deputy chair of the central local area committee, and B, the meetings of the committee be held at least four times a year on dates and times to be determined by the chair in accordance with the schedule of council and committee meetings for the municipal year 22-23, approved at the annual meeting of the council. Councillor Phipps?
Formally moved.
Councillor Johnson?
Formally seconded.
Does any member of the, does any member of the committee wish to speak? Right, so all those in favour of the motion, please show. And, thank you. And those against? And abstentions? Thank you, radical abstentionism in the back row there. So that is passed, and congratulations councillor Little. Oh, sorry, and councillor Hayby. Right, so meeting number two, east local area committee. Will all members of the east local area committee stand up, please? Right, it is to be formally moved by councillor Diane Hurst and formally seconded by councillor Terry Fox that councillor Mary Lee be appointed chair and councillor Anne Murphy be appointed deputy chair of the east local area committee. And the meetings of the committee be held at least four times a year on dates and times to be determined by the chair in accordance with the schedule of council and committee meetings for the municipal year 2022-23, approved at the annual meeting of the council. Councillor Hurst?
I knew you'd miss me, Lord Mayor. Formally moved.
And councillor Fox?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour of the motion, please show. Anybody against? Unanimous, councillor Lee, well done. So... Next one is meeting number three, the north local area committee. Will the members of the north local area committee please stand? It is to be formally moved by councillor Penny Baker and formally seconded by councillor Mike Leavery that councillor Alan Hooper be appointed chair and councillor Vicky Priestley be appointed deputy chair of the north local area committee. And the meetings of the committee will be held at least four times a year on dates and times to be determined by the chair in accordance with the schedule of council and committee meetings for the municipal year 22-23, approved at the annual meeting of the council. Councillor Baker? And councillor Leavery? Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Right, all those in favour of the motion, please vote. And those against? That's unanimous, congratulations councillor Hooper. Right, meeting number four, north-east local area committee. Can all the members please stand up? Right. I've got down that it was to be moved formally by councillor Tony Dams. As he's not here, can I ask councillor Belbin to do that, please? It is to be formally moved by councillor Fran Belbin and formally seconded by councillor Peter Price that councillor Jane Dunn be appointed chair and councillor Talib Hussain be appointed deputy chair of the north-east local area committee. And the meetings of the committee be held at least four times a year on dates and times to be determined by the chair in accordance with the schedule of council and committee meetings for the municipal year 22-23, approved at the annual meeting of the council. Councillor Belbin?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Price? Thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? Right, we'll move to the vote, all those in favour of the motion, please show. All those in favour of the motion, please show. All those in favour, please show. Hands down, anybody against? So congratulations councillor Dunn, the new chair of the area committee, thank you. Right, the next one is meeting number five, the south local area committee. So can members of the south local area committee please stand? It is to be formally moved by councillor Ian Auckland and formally seconded by councillor Sue Auckland, that councillor Simon Clement Jones be appointed chair and councillor Richard Shaw be appointed deputy chair of, sorry, I can't, thank you, be appointed deputy chair of the south local area committee and the meetings of the committee be held at least four times a year on dates and times to be determined by the chair in accordance with the schedule of council and committee meetings for the municipal year twenty-two, twenty-three approved at the annual meeting of the council. Councillor Auckland? Councillor Auckland? Committee wish to speak? In which case can we move to the vote? All those in favour of the motion, please vote. Six, seven. And those against? And anybody abstaining? In which case I duly declare that councillor Simon Clement Jones has been appointed as the chair, thank you. Two more of these, keep going troops. So meeting number six is south-east local area committee. It's to be formally moved, sorry, can you all stand up? Who are in that committee, sorry, not everybody, we're getting carried away here. It's to be formally moved by councillor Brian Lodge and formally seconded by councillor Mick Rooney, that councillor Karen McGowan be appointed chair and councillor Denise Fox be appointed deputy chair of the south-east local area committee and the meetings of the committee be held at least four times a year on dates and times to be determined by the chair in accordance with the schedule of council and committee meetings for the municipal year twenty-two, twenty-three approved at the annual meeting of the council. Councillor Lodge?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Rooney?
Do I have your permission to speak, Lord Mayor?
Just this once?
Formally, Lord Mayor, and thank you.
Beautifully done councillor Rooney. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? In which case, can I have all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And those against? And those abstaining? Thank you very much. In which case I declare that councillor Karen McGowan has been appointed as the chair of the local area committee. And the last one, here we go. South-west local area committee, please stand all the members of that. It's to be formally moved by Joe Otten and formally seconded by councillor Sue Alston, that councillor Andrew Sanger be appointed chair and councillor Tim Huggan be appointed deputy chair of the south-west local area committee. The meetings of the committee be held at least four times a year on dates and times to be determined by the chair in accordance with the schedule of council and committee meetings for the municipal year twenty-two, twenty-three approved at the annual meeting of the council. Councillor Otten?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
I think he's got the knack, hasn't he? Councillor Alston?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Does any member of the committee wish to speak? In which case can we move to a vote? Those in favour of councillor Sanger? And those against? Any abstentions? None. In which case councillor Sanger unanimously appointed? Woo, right, this concludes the business of today's meeting. Hang on, hang on, hang on. Oh, it could have, it could have been worse, it could have been Mick Rooney. Thank you all for your attendance and for getting through this because this has been a difficult meeting, the start of the new ways of working and now we get down to the real work after today. So stay safe and please can I remind you of the need to maintain social distancing while departing the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.